Hi, everyone. Welcome to our January meeting. Happy to be here, everyone. Everyone knows who I am.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Just a second.
The moment of silence for a longtime teacher in Jericho Middle School, Bob Fontaine, who worked in Jericho from 1966 to 2000. He was an outstanding middle school teacher and gave a great deal to us for many years. Please let's take a minute to respect his memory. Thank you.
Don Maygore, we're going to call you up to introduce yourself. So what happened?
Good evening. Okay. Good evening, everyone. At this time, I'd like to ask Coach Richard Stern, Dr. Paul Sevich, and Mr. Corning Rachel Keang up to the microphone. In Jericho's long history of athletics, they've had nine individuals win individual state titles. We'd like to introduce you to number 10.
Rachel's an exceptional athlete who, as Mr. Maygore said, won a state title this year. She, in the process, broke two school records in the six dive and the eleven dive competition. Also broke the New York State Public High School Athletic Association eleventh high score at the state championships this year. She was the first Nassau County female state champion in diving. We look back 40 years and couldn't find any other resident of Nassau County, so that's pretty great. She's the second swimmer diver to the champion on the girl's side. But to speak more about her accolades and her determination, she'll give it to class coach, T.J. Paul Sevich.
Last year, Rachel went up the stage. She placed third. And that next Monday, she came up to me to the pool. We had our discussion on what our future plans for the next season was going to be. She came up with determination she was going to win the state championship. Great, great ambition. There are three things that a former coach of mine taught me that I try to teach them. Poise. Throughout the season, we had a couple setbacks, but Rachel always had that poise, knowing that she was going to accomplish that goal. The second one is pride. Rachel takes tremendous pride in representing her community and being a Jericho J-Boy. The third is commitment. Rachel's commitment to the sport is tremendous. During the summer, she trains hours upon hours upon hours weekly. In off-season, well, our season, during our regular season, she'll come to our practice and then go to Fordham University to practice for another two to three hours if possible. So that commitment speaks for itself. And with those three ingredients, she overcame a little setback of placing second at our county championships. But at the end, she won the state championship, beating the state record, which was in existence since 1998, held by a 2004 Athens Olympian representing the United States.
As we begin our meeting this evening personally, it feels so good to be back in Jackson live and present. It's been far too long since we were here to celebrate the Jackson students, the Jackson staff, for the outstanding job they do. And it's just sad just to be back in Jackson tonight. So we're going to talk very slowly, so the meeting goes on. As a side note, for those of you who have attended board meetings over the last five years, we have had many opportunities to compliment the Nassau County Police Department, for the unbelievable work they do in supporting our students, our staff, and our school buildings. They are part of every training exercise we run. They support us. If we have an issue or a problem, they are literally with us within minutes, two minutes, three minutes at the most. Their commitment is to maintain the health and safety of our schools, of our students, and they do an absolutely incredible job. And tonight, we have three gentlemen from Nassau County Police Department who are out and around and decided to stop by. Chris Lovelace, Andrew Oswald, and Frank Besseil. Thank you for all the good work you do. We understand that you need to check inspection stickers tonight on all the cars over there to cover the cost of this evening's event. So if anybody has an issue with their inspection sticker, you have about five minutes to get out of the car. You guys, thanks for everything you do. Thanks for being here tonight.
And as Hank just said, thank you so much to Jackson for welcoming us to your school. We thank you to all the staff and the students and teachers and everyone who made this a wonderful night. I heard the curriculum fair was amazing. A new format and incredible, so congratulations on that. And call upon Alex Rivera to introduce you to Jackson.
I have some friends joining me. First and foremost, thank you for being here this evening. It is an absolute pleasure to have all of you in attendance with us. And as Mr. Greshman said, it's great to be at Jackson. I get the privilege and honor of being here every single day. So first and foremost, I want to give a round of applause to all the families that came here tonight. So thank you very much for being here. We hope you enjoy this special experience. Tonight was about celebrating learning. We've talked as a building of finding ways to bring joy to our students, to our families, to our school community. And I believe we've done a great job of doing that. And we've done that for years. And it's a testament to the hard work of people that I count on and people that I look at as not only my colleagues, but my friends as well. So thank you to the Jackson teachers. Thank you to the Jackson staff. And thank you to the Jackson community for making what we do at Jackson that much more special. So thank you. I'll give you a round of applause for myself, too. Tonight was an opportunity also to showcase the wonderful things that our children, our boys and girls, your children, are doing here in the building. So much of what was planned tonight was student-driven, student-led. And we had conversations as a staff about ways to showcase the great work in the classrooms. And it all comes back to letting students have that voice and doing that. So tonight, you got a chance to see things from looking at stuff related to history, things related to ELA, to math, to science. But then also all of our specials. You saw art, you saw music, you saw library, you saw PE, you saw science, you saw fless. There were so many wonderful things that were going on. We touched upon steam, STEM. There was coding, there was robotics. There were all these hands-on experiences that students had throughout the different sessions. And ultimately, what we got a chance to see was what happens within the walls of the elementary schools here in the Jericho School District. So without further ado, I want to turn it over to my colleagues here, to Dr. Schwartz and to these great students who've been working really, really hard to bring to you a little bit of their story and what they love about Jackson. So I'm going to turn it over. Without further ado, Dr. Schwartz, I turn it over to you.
Hi. Tonight, I have the privilege of introducing four of our wonderful student leaders. The Student Leader Club is made up of fifth graders who volunteer their time and energy to promote our school-wide SEL themes. We have different themes every month. And they help us out by reading to younger classmates, by facilitating fundraisers, by coming up with spirit days, and by basically doing anything that we ask them to do to help the school community. Tonight, we have Catherine Wang, Liz Garcia, Darren Lin, and Simone Lukerji. And they're going to share with you what has made their learning experiences at Jackson both meaningful and joyful.
Hello. My name is Catherine Wang, and I'm a student here at Jackson. Here at Jackson, we get to experience so many fun and interesting subjects. Hopefully, you've got to see some of what we do in your virtual classroom this evening. For me, I love orchestra and physical education class. Orchestra allows me to learn new songs and improve my play. We get to perform in concerts, and some of us even perform in this one. In fact, we had a concert last night. They hear those who weren't in attendance. Orchestra teaches us about rhythms and makes me feel happy. I love how my body moves to the music. Similar to many other students, I love PE class. We get to play in so many fun games, including a current game we're playing called Nuka. In this game, we catch and throw a ball back and forth over the volleyball net. This game is great for hand-eye coordination. The games we play also allow us to make new friends by working together. What I also love about physical education is how we learn to have good sportsmanship and participate on different teams. These are just two of my favorites of many subjects that I love here at Jackson. I'm happy to be a student of such an amazing school. Thank you for coming tonight.
Hello. My name is Liz Garcia. When it comes to learning, there's a lot to like. For example, it's fun to learn science, social studies, art, and even math. Tonight, I will talk about a few subjects I like best. First, there's music. What is it? Well, for me, it's something that provides feelings, opinions, and emotions, such as calmness, energy, happiness, sadness, and so on. Music also has the ability to make you remember moments that remind you of what you're listening to. English language arts, like music, is a great place to encourage creativity. Writing is an amazing subject to be creative and because you can express opinions, feelings, and so much more. Reading makes you productive. But not only that, it also makes you imaginative and curious. You get to imagine what could possibly happen in your text. You are reading, and you're curious because you want to know what's coming next. Those are two of many subjects I love learning at Jackson. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Darren Lin, and I am a student here at Jackson. I want to share with you what I enjoy most about learning here at the school. I love both math and physical education as they have lots of similarities and some differences. I like math because there are formulas for different problems. These include working with fractions and different operations, including division and multiplication. Speaking of the order of operations, this is one of my favorite areas in math. There are different ways you can solve problems. Here at the school, we also spend time working on geometry and rounding numbers. Math connects with PE through challenges and teamwork. Challenges help to become persistent. And when you have teamwork, you can have more brains working to solve a problem. In terms of physical education, there are so many fun games that we play, including Sea Monster. This game requires you to run from one side to another when someone says a fact about you. Like, run to the other side if you have gone to main. These kids are the sea monster and try to tag you. If you get tagged, you sit down. This game is fun because it also allows us to know each other better. The game we play in PE helps us become more active so we get healthy and live better lives. As you hopefully saw tonight, the learning that happens in our school is special. Jackson does a great job of teaching all the students in a way that allows us to enjoy. We hope you enjoy it tonight as well. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Simone Lukerji, and there are so many things that make Jackson one of the best schools on Long Island. Most important are the teachers, subjects, and the time the school dedicates to us. One of my favorite subjects is social studies. I love the projects we do. They spark my creativity and learning mind. I also love science because this subject makes me feel joyful. We even did a squid dissection, and this interested me since I want to become a marine biologist. You may have other favorite subjects, but these are just some of mine. There are tons more, but for me, science is so studied it really puts the joy in Jackson. Jackson is an amazing place to learn with kind teachers who love us. On a scale from one to 10, I would give Jackson a 15. It is just that I have to skip. Thank you. Have a good night.
We are absolutely deserving of one more round of applause. We have one more thing we want to share with you in a few seconds behind me. But I just want to echo to it. And I heard so many great things about the love that we have of learning here. I also have to really send great appreciation to all of my colleagues from the Board of Education to say thank you to all of you for supporting the things that we do here, saying yes to how we use our fund, saying yes to the programs that we begin to start here and cultivate and then expand on. To Central Administration for your support. Thank you, Mr. Greshman, as always, for saying yes to so many things that we ask for. To the Curriculum Associates, those who are driving the curriculum and the conversations. Thank you for being open-minded in our thinking and our conversations and supporting teachers and their voice as well. To my fellow principal colleagues. Thank you for all the support, the conversations that we have at the school, the conversations we have about making all of our schools a better place here in Jericho. To the teachers, again, to the staff, I said it before, but I can't thank you enough. I am so grateful. I get the joy of working with the greatest teachers that I can find anywhere. Teachers are amazing, and so we always need to remember that. And we need to thank them countlessly because they do amazing things. And we've all been influenced by a teacher. Every single adult sitting here has teachers in their lives that have made a difference, that have gotten into this very place. So thank you. So give them one more round of applause. Thank you, all the teachers in Jericho. And so what we're going to share, we're going to leave you with a short video montage and highlighting some of the things that have happened here in Jackson this school year up to this point. Just a few of the many wonderful things that are happening. So continue to connect with teachers, with us. Check your emails, check your kids' backpacks. Read my emails. But aside from that, thank you for being here this evening and enjoying what we have here. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you so much to the students and Alex. That was really good communication. Thank you. We always love having our meetings at the same time. Next, Middle School Student Council, Crystal Zhao and Caroline Wong.
Hello. Hi, guys. Good work.
Hang on one second. That's what the Jackson people want to do.
Good evening. My name is Caroline Wong.
My name is Crystal Jo. We're the sixth-grade Student Council representative in Jericho Middle School. It is a pleasure to be here this evening. The incoming seventh and eighth-grade parent information was held in the middle school and high school auditorium and virtually on Wednesday, January 11. This meeting provided important information about the school programs for the seventh and eighth-grade students for the 2023 to 2024 school year, including athletics, acceleration, assessments, guidance services, middle school philosophy, and social emotional literacy. The incoming sixth-grade parent meeting was held on Wednesday, January 4. If you are unable to attend the meeting, please contact your child's guidance council.
Our personal bestseller, Saturday Night Battle of the College Bible, February 17 in the middle school's library. It is a wonderful evening for students who continue to stretch through their 12th. Congratulations to our upcoming winners.
During the middle school parent brunch and learn this morning, the topic was learning about Navions. Mr. Sloan, Mr. Gleason, Ms. Ballou, and Ms. Manchabin presented on Navions and all of the valuable features available to our parents and students during their middle school and high school years. They reviewed the Navions activities and our timeline for each grade level. It was a great meeting.
Please join us for Joy PTS and SANTA meeting on Thursday, February 2, beginning at 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. The topic will be on the Allison Spring. We hope that you will join us for this very interesting and meaningful presentation.
The seventh and eighth-grade middle school students have been working hard on History Day projects in their social studies classes. Students that chose to will be showcasing their projects in the Jericho History Day Fair at the end of the month. NHG is a nonprofit education organization which engages students in conducting and presenting original research on historical topics. Each year, more than 1 million students participate. Students choose a historical topic related to an annual theme, then conduct research using primary and secondary sources. This year's theme is Frontiers in History, People, Places, and Ideas. We are looking forward to hearing more about the wonderful research projects at our next Board of Education meeting.
On Tuesday, January 10, our winter 11 sports season began on the last day of the seventh quarter tomorrow. My goodness, the year is flying by. This is a reminder that the parent portal will be closed.
The next mess period is scheduled for Friday, February 3. Our monthly theme is love. We are looking forward to a wonderful day as we prepare for Valentine's Day.
Our annual diversity performance will be on Tuesday, February 10, during the school day and evening in the endless and the ages of our forum from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. It's a wonderful day where students have the opportunity to share things, the quarters, the dance, and the poetry. Please join us for an awesome event.
On Wednesday, February 1, the Jericho Middle School will be participating in the World Read Aloud program. Several of our middle school classes will be zooming for 15-minute intervals with well-known authors. In addition, Thursday, March 2, New York Times bestselling author Kelly Yang will be visiting the Jericho Library, periods 8 to 11.
Thank you for Miss Conklin for organizing such an exciting two days.
Well, that's all for now. Have a great evening.
Thank you, girls. Just wanted to say we're going to do a high school student council report next. I just wanted to say there's a few students here are high school students, so I want to thank you, welcome you, and thank you guys for coming. It's heard of the worst students that come to play. See here, me and Patrick.
But could you make a submission for members administration and Jericho? We hope everyone had an enjoyable holiday break and are just as excited as us for the evening. My name is Patrick.
My name is Ruby Schenker. In the week before break, beginning on December nineteenth, our student council hosted Winter Spirit Week. Monday was pajama day, Tuesday was holiday hats and onesies, Wednesday was winter wonderland, Thursday was ugly sweater day, and Friday was holiday colors. It was amazing to see our students and staff dress up in holiday spirit.
January third, Mark J, Jericho High School's annual course information night. Students and their parents were given the option to learn about next year's classes, parent course selection in the Sam Springer. Eighth grade families were also part of an exclusive window of time to visit Sam Springer gym and learn about the extensive variety of courses offered at Jericho High School. Thank you to our teachers and student volunteers for hosting this and the evening.
Our guidance department has had an extremely busy month planning the schedules for our 2023-2024 school year. Our students in grades nine through twelve will be meeting with their counselors during their social studies classes and choose courses for the next year. Ten graders met with their guidance counselors between January eleventh and eighteen. Nine graders will meet with their guidance counselors January nineteenth, January twenty fifth. And eleven graders will be meeting with their guidance counselors January twenty fifth to thirty first. Our eighth grade students are also meeting with their middle school guidance counselors to assist with scheduling decisions for their first year of high school. Students and parents are encouraged to review the course catalog and browse the course videos prior to student council meetings so that they're knowledgeable of their options and prepared to discuss their interest. Mr. Sloan's emailed all students and parents a link to the course catalog, which is also posted on the Facebook website, and the link to the course videos and the course selection sheets in the first week of January.
The guidance department also recently hosted the summer opportunities and discussion during the PTA and pitiful spot desire where five of our students spoke on their summer experiences. Their experiences ranged from working as a camp counselor, conducting science research, participating in programs like West Point and Stanford, volunteerism and youth trips, and along with a big huge thank you to Mr. Sloan for organizing events, and our senior volunteers for doing this. Recording the meeting will be shared via link in the next year Jericho J-Ham's blog.
On January seventh, our science Olympiad team competed in the Long Island Science Olympiad Competition going to their calendar memorial high school. With stellar results, the Jericho team was fourth out of fifty plus teams around New York and the States. I mean, wish them the best of luck on their upcoming competitions.
Some of our talented students performed in all kind concerts this past weekend at the Jersey Center. We had thirty-six students across all grades performing the all kind orchestra, band, chorus, and jazz ensemble. Greats that time performed on Friday night and we are delighted to perform on Sunday. Congratulations to our amazing, talented students.
Our students in the virtual enterprise class attended a trade show at Miss Grove's last weekend where they competed in various business competitions with their virtual firms. Jericho's two virtual firms, Elite's and Plan U, won gold and silver at their booth sign. From Elite's, Jessica Dell and Cody Welland got gold in sales materials. And from our Plan U team, Bethany Lynn and Elton Chine won gold for company website design. And Brittany Lamey, the art of the scene, won gold for sales material.
All the junior college high school students also recently competed in the Tony annual merchandise competition. Twelve of the twenty-five total Long Island first place winners were Jericho students. A public advisor, Ms. Isil, hopes her experience will help students with their future aspirations, as she stated, experience is instrumental in helping students strengthen their situational public speaking and overall leadership potential. Congratulations for the outstanding performance by students that are impossible by the work by teachers and the business department. And our report was published on Tuesday, Monday, and June.
On January fourteenth, our J-A team succeeded in the competition at Ward Development High School. Nine of our students placed in their respective categories, with six students qualified to compete competition. The Jericho team won first overall.
The end of the second semester will be tomorrow, marking the halfway point of our school year. Here to be posted on February seventh.
The Jericho High School Student Council is ecstatic to present a family night this coming Monday on January twenty-third for students to enjoy a night out at local restaurants with their families. There will be no homework assigned on Monday night, and in addition, students can show their student ID card or present our flyer of no ordering to receive a discount on their order at partnered restaurants. We hope families can go out and support our local community.
Planning a big event for this year's battle of classes. We plan utilizing the entire school day, where two grades will compete during the morning event and two grades will compete during afternoon event. Battle will then culminate with the final match for top two grades during the year's election for winners of the tournament. It is planned for March third, and we hope everyone is just as excited as we are today.
A huge congratulations to our general semifinalists scholars for their amazing work and research. We have five students from Jericho, a total of three hundred semifinalists, and they are Vitalia Palavon, Emily Kim, Kevin Xu, Bree Sakaria, and Mikael Trape, Trapeata. Congratulations again, and we wish them the best of luck in the next round.
That's all for this month. We wish everyone a happy new year to all those results, and we'll see you guys on the next one.
Thanks, guys. High school, it was our PTA council, Allison Elvin.
Good evening. Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Richman, board of members, central administration, faculty, staff, and community members. I'm Allison Elvin, and the president of the Jericho Joint PTA Council. It's my pleasure to be here tonight. Thank you, Jackson Elementary School, for hosting. The Jericho Joint PTA Council has had a busy month. At our January meeting, we hosted Mr. Red Sloan, curriculum associate, school council. In the past, we normally meet with guidance at our main unit, but we wanted to speak with Mr. Sloan earlier this year to discuss things that his office does that do not pertain directly to college admissions. We asked Mr. Sloan to discuss counselor interaction for grades eight to eleven and what that looks like. It was a great conversation that included topics such as Navions, career days, summer opportunities, and new class offerings for the fall. We appreciate Mr. Sloan taking the time to meet with us. The guidance department is one of the best departments we have in our school, and we encourage more parents to meet with their child counselor at any time to discuss their child needs. Take advantage of this opportunity. We're fortunate that the department is so accessible for our students and their parents. Please check the district calendar for specific night dates and times. On Thursday, January fifth, we had our first in-person high school course information night in three years. It was wonderful to see the Sam Springer gym filled with students, teachers, guidance counselors, curriculum associates, faculty, and staff. It was special buzz in the air as the students were so excited to speak to other students and teachers about possible future classes. On Monday, January twenty-third, at nine thirty AM, the middle school library, the Joint PTA Council will be hosting an open meeting that all parents are invited to attend. This will be an in-person discussion on the topic of vaping and the impact it has on our overall health. We will also break down the myths and facts. The discussion will be led by the representative from Northwell, along with Ray Velez, our high school social worker, and the high school administration team. The Joint PTA Council discussed issues that parents learned here and learn more about, and the topic of vaping was unanimously chosen. This is a very important subject that will be geared towards all parents. On Monday, January thirtieth, a virtual parent presentation is going to take place at seven PM, sponsored by the Wellness Committee. The topic will be Body Image and the Struggle Children and Adolescents Face. This subject was brought about by parents on the committee. Northwell will also be leading this discussion and has already pushed into our students' health classes to discuss this topic head-on with our students. We look forward to seeing everyone at both of these worthwhile events. All of our units were very active this month. The elementary schools held successful holiday boutiques, book fairs, and author visits. The middle school had its first in-person book talk with students, staff, and parents. They discussed the book New Frontier by Kelly Yang, a great author who will actually be coming to meet our Jericho middle school students this spring. The high school had a very successful PTA hosting a summer opportunity discussion led by a panel of our seniors. It was great for parents to hear the different opportunities and get an idea for kids who do not know what to do for the summer. SANTA membership is ongoing as they continue to collect and raise money for teacher grants. Thank you so much, everyone, and have a good night.
Thank you, Allison. Now, Bruce, can you come up to do the presentation about the Disney, Disney trip?
We actually have three students here to do the presentation, but we are honored to be here. I'm going to pass the mic on to Joshua, Gigi, and Jordan.
Thank you, Miss Bradlock, and good evening to the members of the Board of Education, our superintendent of schools, Mr. Richman, and the assistant superintendents, of course, and everyone else in attendance tonight. My name is Joshua, and I'm here with Gigi and Jordan, and we are representing the Jericho High School's orchestra, chorus, and band. We are happy to be here tonight and to say thank you for the opportunity to participate in the Disney Imagination Campus program. This is a once-in-a-lifetime trip full of special moments and we'll remember forever, and we thought we could share the highlights with you.
So let's take it from the top. Despite the early departure time on day one, there was a magical energy that filled the Jericho buses on the way to JFK. Even though it rained upon our arrival at Hollywood Studios, the smiles were Mickey ear to Mickey ear in the park. That night, we were exhausted at the All-Star Music Resort, which became our home away from home for the weekend. We woke up on day two ready for our soundtrack sessions. We learned from Disney's greatest musicians and played famous Disney cinematic melodies. The clinician shared many professional tips and personal advice for succeeding in the music industry. The highlight was creating our own soundtrack with Disney animations.
This day, and I've got culminated with a special dinner and front row seats to the harmonious fireworks show. It was an exciting way to end the day. For day three, we entered Animal Kingdom with an early access pass to ride Flight of Passage before the park even opened. Being in Avatar was just one of the many thrills that day. Later, each ensemble warmed up and performed at Jericho Springs, where we were honored to represent the Jericho Music Department on the global stage. The high-spirited audience cheered for our band, orchestra, and chorus. This was an indescribable feeling of pride, especially when we were presented with these three Mickey awards. We ended that day in the happiest place on earth, Magic Kingdom, the final park on this journey. On day four, we traveled home, but our hearts and minds were still at Magic Kingdom.
We want to thank our teachers and chaperones for organizing this trip and caring for all of us. And to be honest, you might have even had as much fun as us.
There were so many amazing memories from this trip, but the biggest thrill of the entire experience wasn't just the rides. It was how it brought us together and united our musical family. Tonight, we want to present each one of you with the official Imagination Campus pin as we recognize and value all of you as a part of our family.
Just I wanted to share briefly, again, you've heard from our, our students and you've heard from our staff, the, the feedback regarding those few days in Disney, which is A++. The, the part that I want to share with you and share with the board is the staff at Disney. The Disney staff, the staff of the tour company, the, the hotel staff, the transportation staff. We heard literally from everyone who interacted with our students saying, we do this every weekend, but we have to compliment the students and staff of Jericho. They were absolutely incredible. They thanked us, they were polite, they were a pleasure to work with for the, the days they were in Disney. We heard that time and time again. And again, our kids continue in every venue to make us so incredibly proud of, of how they represent the Jericho School District. And I just want to take a minute to, to thank our three students that are here. And then please, please relay to your, your friends and colleagues how proud we are of how you represent us. We could not be more proud and, and more happy and more thankful to the board for helping and sponsoring this incredible event. Thank you.
And now the part of the evening we've all been waiting for, the budget presentation.
Good evening, everyone. I never, I never thought I'd be following Disney, but it's great. Thanks for coming out tonight. The workshop number one for the twenty-three, twenty-four budget process. Tonight, um, tonight's night will be going depth on the capital plan. We look at some of the budget codes within the entire budget administrative codes, primarily buildings and grounds. You can see the calendar up here. After tonight, on February ninth, we'll review special education, guidance, health, and psychologist codes. March second, we'll review general education, technology, transportation, and athletics, and employee benefits. March sixteenth, we'll do a full review of the budget, a summary, overall summary. And then on March thirtieth, the board will adopt the budget for twenty-three, twenty-four. So on the tax levy threshold, the CPI this year that came out from OSC is two percent. That is one of the eight parts of the calculation in the tax cap. Another one is the tax-based growth factor. Now, that most of, I think forty-three out of fifty-six districts in Nassau County received a zero growth factor, and we, all of the districts came together and were trying to communicate with Nassau County to ask them why that is. So that piece of the formula is still unknown at this point. As of now, our growth factor is zero. Being that our tax levy last year, this past year, or the year that we're in, was flat from the prior year, and our tax cap last year was, I think, three point seven percent. That difference of what we didn't tax and, or a portion of that difference of what we didn't tax versus what our cap is, is allowed to be carried over into next year's budget. So that's part of our calculation, and that's why our tax cap, instead of two percent, is actually coming closer to about three and a half, three and three quarters percent, notwithstanding the growth factor, which is still in question. Our goal is to certainly achieve a tax levy that is within our cap. Our goal is to continue to do that. This year, we're definitely facing pretty significant challenges in health insurance premiums, in transportation, and inflation when it comes to supplies, materials, and other parts of the budget. Those areas primarily will be discussed at later points. Those areas primarily will be discussed at later points in this presentation, but in this presentation, when we get to utilities, we'll see that as being a pretty significant increase from prior years. These are the budget strategies. We're constantly trying to look ahead and see what, not only 2324 is, but 2425, and seeing what's on the horizon with respect to our budgets, the state of the economy, the state of the New York State economy, and looking at what our needs are in the future. Looking at technology, you know, as far as when did we purchase the large amount of technology devices that all the students have? When will we need to refresh those? So we're constantly looking not only at the budget, we're in next year's budget, but following years' budgets as well. So we're going to start getting into the capital facilities plan, and we first look at our capital reserves. So when you look at this chart, you'll notice that capital reserves 1, 2, and 3 have been fully funded and fully authorized to spend at this point. So they're completed, they're liquidated. Capital reserve 4 has been fully funded, but there's still a balance of $6.4 million within that reserve. And capital reserve 5 was just authorized last May, and currently, there is no balance. We did not put any additional dollars into that reserve as of yet. So starting to look at the building condition survey, and as you can see from the photo, one of Central Office's critical jobs is to test out the harnessable equipment. They can only open it up to students. But to help me out with this portion of the presentation, and a large part of not only the beginning part of any capital project, but going through the capital project, going through approvals, and actually, when the work is taking place, our architect, John Grillo, our construction managers, Bob Caliendo and Eric Ramos, and of course, our director of facilities, Michael Hahn. At this point, I'm going to ask John to come up and summarize the work that has taken place over the past year, and to summarize work that we're planning for this summer that was already authorized, but the work is going to take place this summer and next week.
Good evening, everybody. So before we get into what is proposed for this upcoming May in terms of capital projects, what did we do this last summer? What did we complete? So at the Jeffrey Rattner Robert Seaman School, we completed the roof at that building. At Jackson Elementary School, we completed the air conditioning of the gymnasium, as well as replaced the lighting of the gym. At the Candy Egg Elementary School, we air-conditioned the gymnasium. And at the secondary campus, we finished Phase 4, which I thought would never end, with the ceiling and lighting at the secondary school. We were finally done with ceiling and lighting at that building. We also renovated the technology rooms in the lower level. We replaced the gym floor there as well. And one of the things that came out of there, there was so much work going on here this summer, and it actually worked out in our benefit. We were also scheduled to replace or renovate seven science labs at the middle school. And around the corner in the main lobby there were two art rooms. We held off on doing those because we thought with all of the work that was going on, including the renovation of the central administration wing with their ceiling and lighting, we actually used those classrooms to house some of the administrators during the summer. Once the dust settled this past summer, and the contractors did all of their work, we actually bid those projects in October. So in a sense, we were the first kids on the block with summer of '23 work. So we opened bids in October, we came in well under budget. Cabinets for the summer of '23 are already on order. We're going to have the kickoff meeting in the next couple of weeks. So it really worked out in our benefit by holding some of that work back a year. We were actually, like I said, out ahead of the game and well under budget. What's currently at the state now, and that's scheduled to be done in the summer of '23, and unfortunately, is going to lag on into the fall and the winter. And that's really because of what we're still dealing with since the start of COVID, and that is just supply chain issues and delays on everything under the sun. But in our little school architecture world, it really focuses on mechanical equipment, electrical equipment, long lead items on doors and windows. We're seeing delays on mechanical equipment from 24 to 36 weeks. We're seeing some delays on electrical equipment out between 50 and 60 weeks. Doors and windows are over 24 to 26 weeks. So we're really seeing long delays. The other delay that we're dealing with at the State Education Department level is lack of staffing. We started to see lack of staffing up at SED with architects and engineers, and that's going back to 2017 and 2018, where the staffing level of architects and engineers at SED, at one point, they had two architects and two engineers. So if you're renovating your house, you submit your plans and specs to the local municipality, the town of West Bay, town of Hempstead, town of North Hempstead, wherever it is. They approve your plans and specs. All 724 public school districts in New York State submit up to SED. So you can imagine having two architects and two engineers reviewing everybody's plans and specs at the same time. At the height of the backlog, it was 30 weeks long. It was literally nine and 10 months. So what I was telling my clients back in '17 and '18, as soon as you have your budget approved in May, figure the work's getting done in two years. The state came up with a pretty inventive plan, and they went ahead with a third CORME review. They offered the option for school districts to pay a fee, to have another architect or engineering firm in the state review and approve the plans. We weren't allowed to self-certify. So I couldn't take my Jericho plans, stamp them, approve them, and bid them. Another firm in New York State would do that, and they would come back to office of facilities planning, and the project managers would still have to sign off. The project managers are the people that review the money. They make sure that you're going to get the building aid you're entitled to, that the community approved the plans, what is on the plans are accurate. And that process worked pretty good. Once COVID hit, architects and engineers caught up, and were able to hire more. So they caught up, they're down to around 10 to 12 weeks. During COVID, the head of SED retired, two project managers retired. So now they're down to 2.5. They actually stole someone from another department at the state, but they didn't fill out the system. So she's working two jobs, they have two and a half project managers. They're now delayed, and they're 24 weeks back. So our products that were submitted up in early fall for this coming summer, we're not going to see approval till probably March. So what we'll do is everything possible in the summer to prep for whatever work we can get done. And the only things we probably won't get done this summer is a lot of the one-for-one replacement rooftop units. So we're doing a lot of equipment. So at this summer, at Candy Egg, we are doing some one-for-one rooftop equipment. So we'll do all the prep work this summer in the room. And once the equipment comes in the fall, we'll do it during non-school hours. We'll take off the old unit, put the new unit on. Same thing we're going to do at Jackson and at Jeffrey Rattner Robert Seaman School. We'll take the old units off, we'll put the units on again when the kids are not there. So none of the spaces will be without the existing ventilation. They're all still in place. We're just going to pull the old off and put the new one on. We'll probably see that stuff coming in the fall. The other thing that we're doing at all the elementary schools is they're taking the gym folding partition. We're getting rid of those folding partitions, we're putting in walk draw curtains in those schools. And then, obviously, the science rooms at the secondary school. And then the windows at the secondary school, which is in the front of the original building. And so if you're looking at the three-sided main entrance, the original part of the building on this side, and a couple of windows on that side, that's going to have to get done during non-school hours as well. But the roof at the high school, that'll get done this summer because there's really no long lead items for the roof this summer.
Before you go, two questions. DW stands for?
Disagreement.
Disagreement. And second, because I know this was sort of an issue with some of the technology rooms at the beginning of the year, how are you doing, when are you doing the science labs? You can't do those in the middle of the school year because it takes away classroom space and no one's doing anything.
We have to wait until finals are over. So it's usually the 24th, 5th, 6th, something like that. And we have until August. I beg the superintendent to give you like six or eight more weeks, and he keeps...
Starting to worry.
No.
So those are summer projects, those are 2324 school, those are clearly summer projects.
The middle school science and art room renovations is what?
John was talking about at the beginning, that we already went out to bid for that. We already have approval for that. It was the other projects we don't have state approval yet on.
Your 2324 school year, I didn't know if some of these were getting done during the school year.
All of the rooftop units, the window, anything that has a long lead item, which didn't get state approval on yet because we're not going to get state approval on until March.
Right.
That's what will go into the 2324 year. The middle school science and art room renovations, we already got state approval, we already went out to bid, and the casework is already ordered.
So we're going to have the equipment.
We will have the equipment for that. That's just physically being able to do it in the settlement.
Got it.
Thank you.
I have a question. What's the outdoor canopy in front of the block? Who areas are correct?
So when you walk to, in the high school, middle school, when you're walking into the auditorium for a concert, right before you open the doors, there is a canopy that is beyond its life and needs to be replaced. So we're going to be removing that. That's also, the replacement for that will probably be a long lead time during the summer, assuming we get state approval. We will likely remove it, put the footings in. And when they actually come, we'll put them in at that point. But that's something that just, it passes useful life. So as we look at the next bunch of spreadsheets, it goes building by building like we did in the past. The items highlighted in the yellow are what we're looking to recommend for a proposition number two this year. And as we go through each of the buildings, again, the highlighted items, you'll see a trend that we are going to begin the phases for replacing windows and renovating bathrooms district-wide. So depending on the building, whether it's Phase 1 or Phase 2, that is primarily the bulk of the work in each of the buildings. If you look through the work, you will see it. It's Jackson, bathroom renovation there. Seaman, also bathroom renovations there. Seaman is a smaller of the buildings, so that's not broken up into phases. It's basically the larger bathrooms within that building. Williams, just minor windows in the kitchen area. They need to be replaced at this point. And if you look at the high school, again, bathroom renovation, Phase 1. Window replacement, Phase 2, only because we already, up at the state, is Phase 1, which is the original part of the building, which is the high school principal's wing and that whole area. And we're also looking to do the music classroom reconstruction. While, we really, probably a necessity for a bigger space, we just don't have the room to expand, but we do have the ability to make the space more usable, and this will allow to do that.
I have a question before you run. Couple, a few things. One, the window replacement at the high school, as well as the music room, those are both new parts of the capital plan. Those were not included in last year's presentation. What was the issue? I believe the word is, last year was the windows at the high school were in good shape. I think the project you were talking about, Phase 1, was like a half a million dollar project. And yet here we have?
That was the original part.
That was the original part of the building. And I think the commentary was that the other parts of the building were in good shape. What happened over the last 12 months that we need $5 million in the windows?
We did, what's that?
Yeah, $4.5 million.
In just this phase?
Well, no. Last year, we said the windows were fine. Now we're doing two phases. We're doing two and a half, two and a quarter this year, two and a quarter last year.
So it is, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, it is the back side of the middle school and the back side of the high school?
Right.
That whole area?
Correct.
Can you explain a little what we noticed over the past 12 months?
Yeah, so what's starting to happen over this past year, and has progressively gotten worse, is the back side of our middle school leading around towards the Sam Springer entrance, as well as the newer addition that was added on in 1999, 2000 era of the high school. The back of the building of the high school facing the tennis courts. If you notice, those specific areas are a sheet metal facade with an aluminum framing around those windows. That sheet metal facade has started to separate from the buildings. And what's happening is behind that is starting to rot away. And we're getting water infiltration into the in-between area of the building. So as it starts to progressively get worse, my fear is that we have sheet metal, which can, in a heavy wind, blow off the building. So what we've been doing is, as we see it, we screw it back in, we try to hold it in place, but it's falling apart. So we've kind of pushed it up the list, looking at it as more of a safety concern. I can't have metal falling off a building. And that's kind of why we put it up to where it is now, as opposed to waiting at a longer date.
And just to tack on to that, the school districts are required to do a building condition survey, were required every five years. The state has changed that because for 700 districts across the state, that five-year window came at the same time. So what they did was spread districts out over the next five years. So districts are still required to do it every five years, but once they changed the process, they did 150 districts this year, 150 districts that year. We were the fourth year out of five in that change, which for us became the ninth year because it's been nine years since we did a full building condition survey, which we do to do, I believe, 2024. So we're still looking at it. We're doing our own annual inspections throughout the building, and if something comes up, we take a closer look and we...
That's just a big change for a year to go from zero to $4.5 billion. I would ask what happened, and Mr. Hahn has always explained it perfectly, so.
We put them all on, and obviously, we prioritize...
The ones that are falling off immediately. The second question, bigger sort of... These are the same building, obviously not for the windows and the sign and the bandroom, but these are the same estimates that we had a year ago. And as Mr. Manuel talked about, there's been a whole bunch of inflation for parts, for labor, for every type of material out there. How comfortable are we with the estimates that are in here that we're talking about for not these window projects, which I knew were new estimates in the bandroom, but the other stuff where, as I said, I went back, it's the same number that we had in the budget presentation last year for the projects?
We're very comfortable with the highlighted ones. The ones we didn't highlight obviously weren't a priority for us at this moment. And I'm sure, yes, you're right, there's inflation on some of those areas. I don't, the weight room addition, if you can...
The yellow numbers are updated.
Yes.
But the yellow numbers, so maybe the yellow numbers are all the same as they were last year?
The yellow numbers are brand-new and updated numbers.
I don't think so. I mean, obviously, the bandroom and the windows, because those were new projects. But the other projects, I think, were the same numbers in the presentation last year. I think they were the same exact numbers, except you broke it into phases. If you add the phases together, you end up with the total from the prior year. So I'm asking if there was some, or do we always have a cushion in there? Or we've updated them, and we're comfortable that the inflation of the last 12 months will not affect how much our portions are going to cost?
We're comfortable with the highlighted amounts.
Thank you.
Press the next one.
I have a question.
Yes.
What does the law do with Williams? There are always those items on there. Are there any cases like air conditioning on, or are you...
We are certainly not, if items become a health and safety issue, we're obviously going to look to it and keep up with it and maintain it. We're not going to dress up or renovate certain parts of the building because we lease it out. I know BOCs, and I just looked at that list, and we still have the air conditioning on there. BOCs actually, they pay for it. They upgraded the electric, they put window air conditioners throughout the building. Not that they wouldn't take it if they left, but the electric is now upgraded, which is a big chunk. BOCs has not come to us with anything of significance. And again, if there's a maintenance issue, we work with them to, you know, fix or do whatever we need to do to fix that. we work with them, um, to, you know, fix or do whatever we need to do to fix that particular issue. But nothing of significance has come to us regarding one.
Victor, I have a question.
Yes?
Regarding the bathroom renovations, when you glance at the number quickly, obviously they seem high, like, how crazy are we going with the bathrooms? How modern are they gonna be, like, well, brand new, auto flush and, I mean, the bathrooms are, some of the bathrooms really, really are bad shape, so.
So they are, they're gonna be completely renovated, they're gonna be, um, brought up to all codes, including candy cap accessibility, and specifically at Candy Egg, I don't know if you've been in the bathrooms at Candy Egg, but you walk into Candy Egg, it's this big outer area of wasted space, and then once you're in there, then you go into a bathroom, we're gonna remove all of that and enlarge the bathrooms, especially on the women's and the girl's side. It's just a big area of nothing. So everything's coming down, down to the studs, the plumbing's gonna come out, all new faucets, fixtures, new ventilation, everything is a hundred percent new. We anticipate, because way back when, everything was insulated, asbestos hydrids inside the walls, so we know we're gonna have to deal with that as well. We're gonna have to open up the ceilings from below to, to, the, the traps. And a lot of times, in the olden days, the floors, the, the urinals, were floor-mounted urinals, and they, and everything was pitched to the floor-mounted urinals, you have to add a new floor drain because you can't have a floor-mounted urinal anymore. So it's very labor-intensive, it's about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars per bathroom to renovate a, a multi-stall bathroom now.
So just back to my question though, are we gonna, like, how modern are we going, you know? What's the goal? Because there's auto flush toilets, auto, auto sinks, soap dispensers that are auto, everything is-
There is-
You don't have to touch anything anymore?
All, will be touch-free, but I've experimented and failed miserably with waterless urinals. I would not recommend them in a million years. Um, I've seen them, they fail, they smell, they're very expensive, cartridges you have to, are like twenty-five dollars a cartridge, you have to replace each one three or four times a year. Um, even the dual flushing toilets, because people flush things down a toilet, and they, you, we get backups. It's, it just, so there are things, when you're washing your hands, that stuff, that's gonna be hands-free, that's gonna be touch-free. I'm very hesitant to do certain things with the toilet flush, because if you do the less than one gallon flush, stuff doesn't go down.
So you don't wanna do the auto flush for the toilet?
I do wanna do the auto flush, but they do have a two-stage flush.
Okay, I don't know, that's-
And it actually, and it's actually timed, depending on how long you're, I, I mean, I'm sorry, but it's actually timed based on how long you sit on the toilet.
Right.
I have to answer for members, I'm sorry. I have to be honest. Um, so we're gonna do everything to code, everything is possible, it's all gonna be brand new, full hybrid. Uh, wall tile, floor tile, everything. So it's not just abandoned, it's not gonna be, look like it's patched and, uh-
And, and the, the faucets, um, there'll be actual counters, like I've been in some of the bathrooms, there's no counter even to like put your stuff down, it's like a weird round thing, you like have to press it, the water come dri-
Most of the problems.
Spring doesn't-
We have a little fear.
Yes.
We won't give that.
No, 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 we're not gonna do that.
But we'll put nice counters-
Correct.
So people can use it, put their stuff down, you know, get ready, whatever.
I, I see that, I will bring you all of the wall tiles and floor tiles.
I just wanna say, completely coincidental, but the Jericho interviewed me about a month ago about the bathrooms in the high school and middle school, and I said, come to the board, we are a hybrid, so. I think the students are here. Yes? We're talking. See the numbers? You want to introduce me for the, uh, bathrooms? So this chart shows the, um, the items highlighted in yellow in the bottom half of the chart, with a total of just under six point two million, and the way it's going to be funded is, um, partially through the budget of transfer to capital, one million, two seventy-five, and the balance, uh, will come out of the capital reserve four, which I said has six point four billion dollars, I think, so that'll be the goal.
Um, I think-
Part of the slide.
That one, please, yes. Um, I think last year for total building costs for projects that we wanted to do was like fifty-eight, we did about ten, which brought us down to forty-eight, we're now back up to fifty-three. I know that includes the windows, is there any, what else besides the windows and the bandroom, or abandoned positions?
So all that difference is just bandroom and windows in high school. Thank you.
I don't remember anything else.
Okay, that's the future capital plans, we're always looking for, um, you know, to continue the capital reserves that has worked very well, uh, for the district, and we continue the maintenance, um, the maintenance budget, which we'll talk about a little later in the presentation. Looking at the next, um, codes, uh, now we're gonna go through some of the line items, um, in the budget, again, primarily administrative, uh, this is the Board of Education, District Clerk, and District Meetings. Um, what we're doing, uh, if you look at, I think it's the Boce's code, uh, what I'm, a little more than ten percent, we're looking to do the iPads at the, uh, at the vote this year, uh, as you do when you go to the regular votes. So as opposed to the giant votes, we're gonna switch to iPads, um, to make it a little more easier and a little more efficient during the vote. Uh, central office services, no changes on this slide, everything status quo. Looking at the particular, uh, line items, this is the superintendent's lines, the legal services, as well as personnel. Uh, no significant changes in these areas of the budget. Uh, the business office, um, again, nothing of significance in this portion of the budget, relatively status quo.
And public information services, postage went through the roof this year, and then supposed to last, is that it? It went from the FTE to seventy-six hundred to ten thousand? Uh, it's peanuts for you, but I'm just sort of curious, are we mailing lots of stuff now?
No, if you look at, um, if you look at nineteen twenty, we were above ten thousand. Twenty twenty-one, um, the, the postage was different, uh, because COVID, we didn't have as many mailings. Last year, we went back up to seven five hundred, seven five hundred and ten thousand.
Thank you.
The next slide is personnel. Um, again, nothing of significance changing in this particular area of the budget. If we look at liability insurance, you'll see a significant increase in this area of the budget, um, for a couple of reasons. One, um, cyber insurance is certainly a significant piece, and another is, um, the CBA cases that are going on throughout the state, causing that particular code to increase, uh, pretty dramatically over the last couple of years.
Where are these last year, because this is a new page, I don't remember seeing this in the presentation last year. Are these tied into something else?
No, I realize it was not included in the last year.
Okay.
But now it is? You like the picture on the right there?
He's a huge liability, I thought he was the reason you put that in there.
Uh, operations and maintenance, personnel services, custodial, um, nothing changing as far as staffing is concerned, these are the FTEs. Next slide. Again, these are the, uh, FTEs, no change in the FTEs. Next slide, please. When you look at the, uh, budget from B and G, there are certainly, um, increases in this area. The most significant is utilities, uh, which were increasing to one and a half million. Um, the other increases primarily in supplies and materials are basically due to custodial supplies tied to inflation and the increase in pricing in those areas. And when we go to the next, um,
improvements of buildings district-wide capital, I think when I looked at last year's presentation, that number was like meaningfully lower. Didn't, was there, was that ten billion, it's now-
So what happens is the proposition, proposition passes, once it passes, accounting-wise, it has to flow through a code, and that's a code that flows through. Next slide, please. Thank you. So over the next several slides, these are just descriptions of the codes that were on that main sheet in the slide just before. So it just breaks out. The security, that's an area that's been increased a lot over the last couple of years. Um, fire equipment, boilers, burners, maintenance, um, these are just, again, descriptions of the numbers. Next slide. Maintenance and material supplies, again, these are just descriptions of what the types of, um, purchases that we make in those particular codes. Um, equipment, again, this is descriptions of the, of the items, and I want to thank the B and G group for the picture on the left, uh, we did that project internally, and they did a really fantastic job of putting that something on there. Next? Yes? What is Ventrac?
Uh, Ventrac is a, uh, yes, did you hear the pub? Uh, a Ventrac is a, uh, outside vehicle that we use for snowmobbing, mostly. Uh, covered with a street sweeper brush, uh, snow plow, snow blower, uh, small, small sander on the back. It's an all-wheel drive, uh, vehicle that we use, it's small, uh, and it's, we've been buying on each year of each school. So I've got one left, actually Jackson's the only school that doesn't have it, so this will be the last one.
So similar to the fun slide, um, superintendent and I have to drive it first and check it, make sure it's safe. We drove it to my house last week. Um, this line item is what I discussed before, so this is the portion in the actual budget uh, that offsets the, um, the, the capital improvement plan that we discussed earlier in all of the highlighted areas. So this is that one million, two seventy-five. Next slide, can we go? Community service, we're eliminating this budget line. This, um, in the past, in the past past was the scope program, um, that the district paid for, and we received, um, payments from the parents directly, now it goes directly through scope, so there's no need to budget that line anymore. Next slide. Curriculum development and instruction, uh, no changes in FTEs here, again, the same amount of FTEs, next slide. Uh, these are the dollar amounts, again, nothing of significance that we call in these areas. Uh, next slide. Uh, building supervision, again, FTEs unchanged from prior year, next slide. And these are the dollar amounts associated with that, relatively flat, uh, in this area year over year. Next slide. Uh, upcoming meetings, again, February ninth, uh, we'll be discussing special education, uh, library, guidance, health, psychologists, social workers, and then March second is general education, um, technology, athletics, transportation, and maintenance. And that's it. Is there any other questions?
So, have we done anything in the district, um, towards sustainability?
Go ahead.
And again, you know, given that our architects and construction guys are here, um-
I can tell you lighting-wise, we, lighting-wise, we did LEDs throughout the district, I think we're just about at a hundred percent, we're done, uh, replacing all of those T eights, T twelves, the fluorescents, every light in the district is now LED. Is that what you were referencing?
Oh, so, okay, that, that might be one area, but I guess the biggest area would be, do we still have, do we still have kids and teachers and custodians and administrators walking around with plastic water bottles? Are we finding, are we-
We, we purchased, um, a lot of the water filters, um, that are filtered, and, but yes, I'm sure there's still plastic water bottles that people- drank occasionally, I don't know who they are.
Yeah, well, yeah, but everybody should love, but, you know, you can't buy, you can't buy a home spring water bottle in Norway anymore.
Right.
You can't buy it, because they, you know, they're, they're on a mission, and then, and again, it's a country, but there are municipalities around that are really addressing sustainability. And again, the example is, instead of water bottles, people have, they carry around their-
We provide, we provide the-
All water bottles, now we have filling stations.
Yeah, we provide the filling stations, I think there's actually additional ones in the budget for next year. Um, we've been doing that every year, expanding the amount of those types of, um, water filtration systems that we have, as opposed to the old water bottles.
And again, just, again, just as an example, um, so it's just brought up, so we have a postal, postage budget of three thousand, and then went to ten thousand, which means we're printing, we're printing more documents rather than using electronic ones. And again, that's a small item, you know, I do think everything counts, in terms of that, it's not so much the money, it might be some other sustainability.
No, I agree. I, I, I have to say, um, when it comes to mailing and postage, our district is excellent. I, I mean, other districts are mailing out so much stuff to homes, where we really, we're, I would say ninety-five percent electronic in this four year. Um, you know, are, are we still making copies for students of lessons and what have you? Yeah, that's still taking place, but again, uh, as far as mailings going home, it's, and it's been like that for a while. We've been electronic that way for a long time. Certain things we have to mail home, a bunch of newsletter, uh, a bunch of notice, we're sending out the UPK, uh, notice tomorrow, that's a mail. So certain things we have to do, uh, but for the most part, we've cut that back a lot. Any other questions? Thank you, everyone.
Our enrollment, uh, our enrollment continues to, uh, to grow. Our enrollment as of January the thirteenth was three thousand, three hundred and twenty-two students, which is an increase of nineteen students over our last report. Uh, additionally, um, Victor had mentioned, uh, UPK mailing, um, as you know, we started a uni- universal pre-kindergarten program this year with three classes running, uh, Seaman, Ratner Seaman School. Uh, while we have not received a firm commitment from the state that they will continue to fund the UPK program, our understanding is that they will be funding in the, uh, budget for the next school year. Uh, so based upon that, we are going to, uh, continue to plan to run three classes of UPK at Ratner Seaman next year. Uh, we are sending out a postcard tomorrow, uh, to every residence in our school district, uh, announcing that if we are funded, we will be running the program, um, and please, um, register for the program if you have a four-year-old, uh, child next school year, with, with some specific information for registration. I read that's a case, to your point, where we need to reach each and every home, not just email, you know, we have email addresses for our parents, but this is something that we need to go to every email address, uh, and we do give it a postcard, not a letter, so small paper, small postage, but, but a have to. Um, the, the district has been reviewing our goals, um, they reviewed them through the fall. Uh, that, um, our goals, our draft goals, will be rediscussed by the board, uh, at our next meeting in February, uh, and our hope is that the board will make some, potentially make some revisions to the goals, and actually adopt those goals, uh, at our next meeting. Uh, the board is scheduled to meet next Tuesday evening, January the 24th, uh, for a work session at 7:00 PM in the middle school library, and the topic of the evening will be mental health. So we invite you to, uh, to join us, um, next Tuesday evening or to join us by, uh, by YouTube next Tuesday evening. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Um, next...
If, that's, I've got a couple of questions for our superintendent. Um, first, can you provide an update? I know you gave the board a slight update. I was a bit confused on the data migration project. Um, moving everything to the cloud.
Patrick, are you with us this evening?
I am. We are about 90% of the way to having, it's a power score we're migrating, we're about 90% of the way there. We're testing the plugins and the auto sends over the next two weeks. If they're functional, we should be ready to flip the switch first week, the second week of February.
Thank you, Patrick. Great. And how does that affect, we're still waiting for that to be done for residency recertification, correct?
We're doing training, you know, Joe is doing training, all right, and we're on schedule with that, and then do a day test. And then once that goes, we really go for class. Yes, Joe?
So we're thinking sometime in March, we might build a start?
No, February.
Um, Mr. Superintendent, I, I've heard from a couple of students on behalf of the community confirm that there's some issue with the high school library, I guess, closes at an early hour, like 3:00 or 4:00. I guess there are, you know, I know there's been some discussions about trying to keep it open a little bit later. Is there any hope that that may happen?
We, the library closes not at 3:00, Sam, it closes at 4:00. Um, we, over the years, have, have tried to ascertain whether there's a need for us to stay open later. We do send buses to the Jericho Public Library every day. Um, Loriann, how many buses do we send up to the Jericho Public Library?
Starting with the middle school to high school, there's four buses that drop there.
Okay, so we, we are providing transportation to, uh, the Jericho Public Library. Uh, we always are up to, uh, continuing to look at whether there's a need for our library to be open at the 4:00.
Okay, so we're like that. No. Um, last year, a well-respected member of our community stood before the board to discuss shortcomings in the district's approach to Black History Month, which is the month of February. Um, what actions were taken in response to these comments? Has the new DEI committee held any discussions about this? And what changes and improvements, if any, can we look forward to next month?
Always appreciate the heads up, Sam. Um, and that comment was made publicly, uh, last year, uh, and I would tell you that the staff responded pretty strongly to that comment. Um, we heard universally from our teaching staff and our administrative staff uh, that there are many components of, uh, studying and celebrating Black History Month throughout our district. Um, so, you know, let me, let me say to the record, uh, I strongly disagree that, uh, that our district is, is not, um, appropriately celebrating Black History Month. I believe that we are. Can we improve, uh, and, um, uh, improve the, um, the celebrations through the month? Yes, we can, and I know those discussions, uh, have continued to take place on an annual basis, uh, in, in our departments. Um, in terms of talking about, um, activities, there are always additional activities that come into our schools in the, in, in the month of February. Uh, as a matter of fact, this year, on this Friday, tomorrow, um, the music department is, um, running a Louis Armstrong, um, event for music department in celebration or in anticipation of celebration of Black History Month, uh, in the month of February. There are always additional and new activities, uh, that, that take place K-12 throughout our district, Sam.
Great, great. Um, February is a busy month. It's also American Heart Month. Last year, we had some discussions about introducing CPR instruction program for all our students. We were looking at the district running its own program internally. Alternatively, there was a high school student that had contacted us about program, arranging a program to run through the American Heart Association. Where do we stand with that program? And is there any expected timing with that in anticipation of February's, uh, American Heart Month?
We continue to look at ways that we can offer, um, and I know that, John, you, you, can you comment for us, please?
We already, in all our health classes, we already teach the American Heart Association program to the 10th graders every year. Uh, the problem was in the last two years because of COVID, there was a feeling that that would be, you know, skipped over. So we are looking at ways to reach our 11th and 12th graders who didn't receive that instruction. Uh, we have talked with, uh, two of our instructor certifiers, uh, in the district in regards to offering it out to staff and so that, you know, we can make sure that anyone who wants to be trained will be able to be trained.
Thank you, John. They don't really want to be trained until they're trained. Yeah, I appreciate that. Um, next thing, I guess, I just wanted to raise, because I know we've talked a lot, um, in the newspaper and publicly about the frozen production that's coming up in March, you know, just, we, we often talk about getting students and parents involved in what goes on in the school. I, I went to the fall production that, that the drama department did, and, you know, I'm hoping that there's some way, or, you know, you go to a soccer game, go to a basketball game, there's certainly some where there are, you know, a number of students or parents that show up, but, you know, is there any programs that we have in place to try to encourage that? I know everybody's in their own world, um, focused on their own business. But I think that at some point, and it's going to be in conjunction with other parts of this community, to, to get just more involvement, more support amongst students, supporting students in their activities. And like you said, you know, I understand a Wednesday night is tough to go to a, a sports game, but on a Friday night or Saturday night when, when you've got, you know, 20 kids performing in a production, you know, the theater's not as full as it should be. I'm, I'm certainly hoping, and I know we're optimistic, that we can probably change that type of mood with Frozen, but, but it goes beyond the, the drama department. And is there anything that the administration's looked at or tried over the last couple of years in that area?
Yes, there is.
Has it not been successful? Or has it been successful and just not successful enough?
I, I, look, I believe that we always try to encourage student participation, school spirit. I think if you look at homecoming last year, uh, again, hugely successful. Um, I think there is a, a desire district-wide on the part of our staff, on the part of our students, uh, and part of our parent community uh, to look at, at strategies to increase student participation, to increase school spirit. Uh, I think coming out of COVID, uh, was the, the, the perfect time, uh, for us to increase student participation. And again, I think since we've come out of COVID this year, uh, I see more people attending, uh, and again, starting with homecoming. I see more, more student participation, uh, in sporting events. I see more parents, uh, at music events. And I do believe we're on the right road to, uh, increase, uh, student and parent participation.
Thank you. Um, and then you talked about the January 24th. We have another work session scheduled for February 2nd. Is that correct? Work session. I thought we, I thought we had a camp hat because we moved to meeting. Is that, that's still on the calendar, correct?
Yes.
All in favor that it's on the calendar? Um, do we have a, a topic for that meeting at this point? I know we're jamming a lot of meetings here because you said we have a February 9th regular board meeting scheduled for that day. I'm not even sure the sisters could handle that many meetings. I'm not sure.
I have a work se, I have a work session for February 2nd on my calendar.
We have it on the, um, website, on the board presentation calendar with topic CPT, but we do have it down for February 9th.
Not to pick on Mr. Mankwich, and I'm sure it won't happen on February 2nd, but, um, if, if it was February 2nd and if it is an empty date, you know, I, I know I'm, we, we spend a lot of time talking about, uh, educational topics. I know on this, whatever it is, the 24th, we're, we're doing some emotional and psychological projects. I, I would love to see, if not February 2nd, sometime, a work session coming up, some focus on physical well-being, especially as, you know, the American Medical Association came out with some crazy report that I'm sure Dr. Balachandran, Dr. Fresto know much more about, about encouraging kids to, you know, have surgery and take weight loss drugs than, um, you know, we, we deliver or we, um, give the Presidential Physical Fitness Challenge every year. We'd like to know, what is the actual physical fitness of our students? Um, is that a federal, state, a Jericho requirement? How many of our students complete it? How do we do? Are there any remedial steps that we can take? Because in addition to giving them a great education and making sure they're socially, emotionally stable, it would be great to know what types of things, absolutely fabulous sports programs that we have at this school, you know, even now. What is the actual physical fitness of our student body and what can we be doing along those lines to help them in that area? Because, um, what the American Medical Association said seems a little crazy.
Sam, I, I can tell you right now, the statistics we keep when we test the students, part of the students. They, we give them their scores, they, they get copies of the norms, so they know where they're at. So we don't keep track. Like, I don't look at numbers and percentiles of kids all the time. But we feel that it's best that the kids have the numbers, they know where they're at, and then we can just guide them if they come from the teacher and say, you know what, I was looking at lacking in a specific area, then the teacher can help them in that area. And then we gear instructions throughout the year. We'll do January fitness days, we'll do certain things, and then we retest at the end. And hopefully the kids will see, you know, hey, I made improvement in this area, this, this is a good thing, you know? So that's, that's typically why we use the test.
So is that a federal, they can deliver to, I don't know what word I'm trying to look for, to give that test? Is that a requirement or is that something we need to monitor? It's not a requirement. And in terms of the...
It's not a best practice.
Best practice. And in terms of the overall health of the student body, that, those are not statistics we put together. You do much more individualized, one-on-one, these are your numbers, deliver them to them and, and come back to it. Okay. Then, then that's not really a big meeting. That was a great meeting, Mr. Mankwich. Thank you. Um, then a follow-up question to you, because there was a, is there, um, I know there's new regulations on the physical fitness curriculum that's coming into effect for the next school year. Is that correct?
Are there new standards?
Standard, standard, standard.
Introduced. Uh, really, it doesn't have, I'm not going to say there's that much to do with the fitness that we do, um, especially, you know, at the school level. You know, we are still, we're, our program, you know, we spent time with our RDs looking at our phys ed program that we currently have and how it reflects in the new standards, and we're there. You know, we're already, we made some little changes here and there, but what we do is definitely reflected within those standards.
Thank you very much.
Are you done?
I, I am, I'm sorry. It's not over.
Okay, um, we're going to move to the discussion of the revised weighting system for high school courses.
Basically, uh, we, we have spent several meetings, uh, reviewing the recommendation, um, to revise our weighting system. We have a, a recommendation that, that started from our guidance department and relayed through administration to the Board of Education to revise, uh, our weighting system as outlined, uh, by Mr. Sloan at several of our meetings. Uh, we're bringing that forward to the Board of Education, uh, as we had planned through the fall, and we will bring it forward, uh, to our January meeting, uh, for final discussion approval of the Board of Education.
And we had asked for comment from the public, so we received a number of emails and some statements at prior meetings. Does anyone on the board want to make a comment about it?
I think as always, the administration and Mr. Sloan have done a great job, and I think it's a great weighting system. I still think the question sits out there as to when we adopt this. Um, do we do it secretly? Uh, and, and if we're going to talk about that, we'll talk about it. I'll save my comments at that time, but I, I think everything I put together made perfect sense. I think, gen, in general, the comments have been, that I've heard both privately and then, you know, the couple of comments that were sent to the board were positive. But timing is definitely an issue.
The, the feedback that we have received, um, has been overwhelmingly positive.
I've just had a question. Mr. Sloan, do you know of any other schools on Long Island that do this kind of pan weighting system that we're looking to adopt?
Uh, maybe most, most schools on the island do have a weighting, a system that differentiates in rigor, uh, which is what we're looking to do as opposed to a solid, uh, single weight for all or a, or a weight for none. Uh, so that is, that is the standard, uh, certainly on Long Island, and similar to that, but there isn't a district on Long Island that I know of that uses additive, uh, based weighting. They're mostly a percentage, percentage weighting, like 3% for this level, 8% for that level. Um, we have an additive system so that, that point two or that point three or point four gets added to the student GPA regardless of whether they have a, a B or an A or an A+, um, as opposed to just a percentage that's there.
I apologize, Mankwich. A, a, a B equates to a 3.0?
Correct.
And an A+ is a 4 or 4.33?
A 4.0, well, 4.0 if I'm weighted.
So an, an A+ is a 4.0, a B is a 3.0, so what's a B+?
Uh, B+ is a 3.3.
But then an A- would be 3.66, which would make an A of 4, and then we're back still at an A plus of 4. That's where I, that's where I got confused when I started doing it.
No, I think it's a pass grade here. Yeah, A plus is 4.0, A 3.8, A minus is 3.6, B plus is 3.4, and B is 3.2, B minus 3.
Oh, okay, so it goes down from A+ and a 4.0 down to a B- and a 3.0 by a point two factor each grade.
A plus is 4.0, A 3.8, A, A minus is 3.6.
We even played that. We even played that, so these, whatever. All good. Thank you, Mr. Sloan. Thank you, sir.
Um, is there anyone in the public that wants to say something about this? Allison, thanks.
Hi, thank you. This is Allison from Long Island. At November's border bed meeting, I made a statement regarding those weighting systems for the high school courses on the, the joint PTA council. I'd like to reiterate that now. After Greg Sloan made a presentation regarding the weighting of grades to the border bed, our joint PTA council had a discussion. We thought Mr. Sloan did an excellent job presenting all the facts and laid out the difference here of classes and how each one would be executed. He pointed out the miniscule difference in recalculating the student GPA using the new method but appropriately allowing a heavier rate to those classes that required a heavier workload. The joint PTA council all agreed with this new weighting system, and it should be rolled out all at once and be retroactive for all students rather than just starting at one grade at a time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Allison. Anyone else?
Do you have a blue light?
Yeah, you have a light. Not for us, for the people at home.
Hi, I'm Zoe Muller. I'm a senior at the high school, and I just wondered about the new weighting system. Um, how have teachers responded to that and if they, you know, disagree or they have questions? Um, how has the board, you know, taken their, um, I guess, into consideration?
I had a, a couple of, of conversations with teachers individually, um, but I can't say that that necessarily represents the whole teaching staff, but, um, there have, there were some questions that came up. I think many of the, the CAs, um, had those conversations with their departments at department meetings that I wasn't necessarily at, but, um, I think generally speaking, there, you know, there was a consensus.
And we did, I mean, we opened up for comment by everyone, so we didn't receive any emails specifically from teachers.
And, and just to clarify, Mr. Sloan, I know I've asked you this a dozen times, the only thing that weighted GPA is used for, to the best of your knowledge, is for college applications.
Oh, yes, correct.
Go.
Um, I'm afraid I, I missed a lot of the...
Hi, Felicity. Um, I am afraid I missed a lot of the meeting, um, that you had this discussion, but just now I heard this, when you have the weighted, and I know I had... I heard this, when you have the weighted, and I know I had, how junior our students are applying to other colleges with that, and then talked about mental health and pressure, but they force students to taking part of more, even more AP classes because it's weighted now, they're at a disadvantage if they don't take AP classes, because their GPA is not gonna be as, as high as the students. I know there's a, it's, it's, it's bad, like, because if you don't write them, it's like, okay, why should I take an AP class because it's all the same? But when you do that, you're forcing a lot of kids who might not be able to take AP class and GPA AP class, because now I don't want to be a three point five where everybody else is a five point oh. It makes me look really bad. I mean, you're gonna have the work session on mental health and pressure and that stuff, so I don't know how.
So we, we took into consideration that very thing, because obviously, we're, we're trying to support students' mental wellbeing. We know that students before, even with our current weighting system, are choosing their classes based on, in many cases. We hope that kids take, take the classes based on their interests and what they wanna do and the course that they feel like they'll be most successful in, but we also know that kids do pick their courses based on, in many ways, what colleges want to see. So they were already making those decisions before. I don't think that our new proposed weighting system only has the difference of a point one between a college or an AP class, between a, a regents and a college level class, and because we're now giving weight to many courses that never received weight before, it sort of balances the scale, which is why there is a very miniscule difference in students' recalculated weighted GPA with the new weighting system. Because many, many of the classes that took before had a zero weight, and now will be receiving a point two weight, and because of that, we're confident or hopeful at minimum that students are gonna see that that, that change, that decision to take that AP class is not having a significant impact on their weighted GPA. Miniscule enough that it will not make a change in college admission decisions, but does then give us a weighting system that does what a weighting system is supposed to do, and that is to differentiate in rigor, but not to such a large degree where you'd have one student that chose not to take AP classes with a three point oh and, and the student with many AP classes having significantly higher, it, it really balances out. When we looked at students on both ends and all areas of the spectrum, students that never took a single college or AP class, all regents level, and students that took, you know, many AP, and they were both impacted the same, in that same small way. So we're hoping that with the guidance from our school counselors and the conversations that they have with students regarding choosing courses for future years, that any student that presents with making decisions based on the new weighting system, that we would dissuade them from making those kind of decisions based on that very, very small difference in weighting, but rather to think about the courses that they can be successful in, that are the most demanding that they can be successful in and do so in a mentally, you know, healthy way.
Don't most of the school or whatever, percentage of the universities and colleges look at an unweighted and then reweight on their own?
Many, many do, but we have, we have schools even like Binghamton, for instance, that will look at weighted GPA for admission purposes. So that's why we felt like it wouldn't be wise for us to get rid of weighting altogether, because we know that there are many schools out there that actually will look at the weighting system that we provide, so that, that really benefits, you know, many, many of our students. There are plenty that apply to colleges that wanna recalculate UPA's or just look at the unweighted, but we know that there are also-
Because everybody does get it.
I did a survey of about a hundred and twenty colleges that come to visit Jericho, and many of them, surprisingly, even, even to me, said that they look at the weighted GPA for us.
This is Ethan Brown, I'm a junior at Jericho High School. So how would, I'm wondering, are you planning to, to put this program in contact with, with the new weighting system into the high school? How will it affect current student, and their college applications?
I, I mean, I, I would say that it's not gonna affect any student as far as their college applications, as far as decision. Because of the, the minimal change in the GPA, the choices that students made two years ago, I would advise them to, even if we went back to a different weighting system, to have made the same choices, because making those choices based on this weighting system isn't, isn't a good idea. I, I, and I'd say that for any weighting system. Students should be choosing courses that they feel like they can be successful in, that they could demonstrate their interests, and, and the rigor of their curriculum to college, and that's different for different students, depending on their ability and the school stuff they're working at.
And his, and his question was how will it be implemented? So, so starting after this, the completion of this school year, all of the classes will be re, reweighted and from like, if, if someone who's a junior now, when they're a senior, all of their four years of classes will be reconfigured. Is that the requirement?
Yeah, that is, that is, yes.
Does this apply to, to, to the junior class, to long class, or one?
Yes.
That hasn't been decided officially. I mean, that, that, that's what-
That's what, that's what the recommendation was.
I haven't heard that. I heard the recommendation to the weighting system. I didn't hear Mr. Sloan say when, that it should immediately be adopted.
I believe the recommendation all along, Sam, has been on July first, 2023, for all students in Jericho High School.
Am I correct? Am I correct? You like that idea?
Great. Am I correct? That is the recommendation and the discussion that we've had through the fall.
Yeah, for, for all the reasons that I, that I stated already, I, I don't see any reason, I don't think that this will not have a negative impact on, on students in any tangible, in any tangible way. I think it makes our, our system more, you know, I think it makes, it makes more sense to do it that way. Weighting, I mean, we've been doing, say, this for a long time, could we wait longer? Absolutely. I mean, this doesn't have to be adopted at all, but that would be my recommendation.
But part of it is perception versus reality, and as someone, and Mr. Brown, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but as a junior, it's something reflective. You have an opinion about when you think the timing should go, because, like I said, I, I have no secret, I've got a junior. I speak to a lot of parents with juniors, and some of them understand this issue, some of them have no understanding of this issue, but all of them are like, wait, this is gonna affect my kid. And I'm like, yeah, but it's only gonna affect it by a little bit. They're like, I don't know. And, you know, I have parents who are like, oh, but this, you know, this isn't fair, and half of them didn't even know there was a weighting system, but there are those who did know there was a weighting system, and there are those who, typically ones who had older brothers or sisters who went through this process already and said, wait, there is a weighting system, you wanna take this class, and so you may have a junior or even a sophomore who has chosen their schedule, whether rightly or wrongly, and, and, you know, you and I have talked about this, and I'm in, I'm in full agreement with you, but there is that difference between perception and reality, and, you know, I, I, I'm not sure it's worth it to upset a portion of the community by saying we're changing some of the rules in the middle of the game, and, and that, that's the concern I have about the recommendation, not the weighting. I think the weightings are great, I think the weightings are fair, and it's what the colleges want. It's not what we're saying we'd like to do this to create more pressure for our students, it's just what the colleges said, we need weighted GPAs, and I, I, I think it's really a sensitive topic for the sophomore and the junior class, and again, a lot of it's perception versus reality.
I have a similar question about the same.
Say your name, please.
My name is Sonpo, and we wanna have a junior. So, um, first of all, I would like to thank you, you know, for the occasion, administration, and the guidance counselor, as in, for the initiative. So, um, I strongly support the initiative of the weighting of the, of the, and I did a step in a light direction in order, in order for the Jericho to be competitive school compared to other Long Island schools and other New York State schools. So, um, my, my question is, I think you've similar thought about the timeframe, you did, if it's adopted, you did, gonna be implemented, and the second is, let's say, for example, if someone only took the class before, like, for example, the, the science or maybe any, uh, any, maybe no type, no type, no, and so on, so you need proceed and tie to the student who only previously taken that course?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah? So what about the timeframe? I mean, talk about my, my, my already in junior, how soon it will come to me?
You have to think about that.
Me?
Yeah.
So the recommendation from the guidance department and administration is to implement this effective next school year?
Yeah, and one, one of the reasons I think is because we did identify some courses that I think we all agree have not got weight in the past, that we agree should get weight, like, courses like science research, social science research, and making changes to those would also make sense to do retroactively, so I think we were gonna do that for our students that are, that currently, it might be sensitive to do that for everybody at once.
I, I love the idea of changing this thing. I think that people have been so focused on changing the system, that the question of when it gets changed, if it affects your kid as a sophomore or a junior or as a freshman, has been overlooked during this process, and I think that's why, up until this gentleman and, and maybe Mr. Brown a little bit, you know, you haven't seen a lot of, of feedback on it, because people are like, yeah, that makes perfect sense, but, you know, people are gonna say, and, and again, it may not, you know, I, I don't wanna get calls from twenty parents saying, see, you screwed my kid, because he didn't get into the school because you changed the weighting, when, you know, I believe you when you say, this will have no impact on that, but I, I can't, you know, I, I don't want to have that type of conversation.
So, is, um, does anyone ever wanna make a motion to adopt the policy? Or make a motion? And so, so the motion would be that we're adopting the revised weighting system for all high school courses effective July twenty twenty-three as recommended by the guidance department?
Before they would, did the PTA have any viewpoint on timing, Mrs. Ellman?
Yeah.
I apologize.
We weren't paying attention.
I'm so tranced, I realize.
We would like you to see the class.
Thank you.
Do I have a second? Chris, any further discussion? It's all in favor? Thank you. Five votes. Thank you for all of your, we really appreciate you, it's really nice to have you in the course of questions, so thank you.
Was that a first meeting or is this not a policy? What is, what was, what is this?
It's not a school policy, it's not, it's not a board policy, it's a school policy, so.
So why is the board voting, huh?
Chris, you want, Chris, you wanna weigh in, please?
I'm over here. I give him person bigger chance.
A little cold over here, too, by the way.
He intentionally saw.
This is not a formal board policy that would require going through the mechanism of fourteen ten, which would be first reading, second reading. It's an internal high school weighting issue that you're dealing with, so it didn't actually require this kind of a vote, but now you have, through the board's discussion, to like, give an acquiescence to, a directive to the guidance department and the high school to implement this. So you have now given them a clear directive, but it's not actually a policy we need to go through fourteen ten.
Thank you, Chris. We're gonna go to approval of minutes. Do you have a thought that the Board of Education make any necessary corrections? And approval of the minutes that remain in date in December twenty-two, twenty twenty-two? And we discussed a change to the minutes in our second discussion that we'll have implemented. Do I have a motion? Second? Chris? Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Opportunity for the public to be heard. If you'd like to make a comment or ask a question, please tell your association, if you are a specific group. If you'd like your statement to be included in the board minutes, you must hand a written copy of your remarks to Victor, so we will be overseeing. As always, public discussion on matters relating to staff and students at which there are reputation, privacy, or right to due process, or those of others could in some way be violated, is prohibited. Okay, unfinished business. Adoption of policy seven two 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 diploma and or credential options for students with disabilities. We have resolved that the Board of Education adopts the policy you just mentioned, seven two two two. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Jen, second. Divya? Any discussion?
Yes. Sort of a two-part comment. One, we talked about this in November, we had a long conversation about it. I think, Mrs. Citron, when we changed it, you said you were wavering between going to what now is reflected in this draft or just going back to the original draft. Having now read the new draft, having thought about it, I, I believe that going back to the existing policy and not making any change is preferable to what we've put onto the agenda here. That the existing policy, while far from perfect, is, is meaningfully better than the draft that we have just come up with, or the, the new implementation that we have just come up with. And if that's not something people support, then I do have a couple of comments on cleanup on the existing policy, on the new, on the newly proposed policy.
I have, I like the newly proposed policy of my personal opinion. I think it's very, it makes it very clear that we're supportive of, on, of any students with special needs, if they are comfortable, if they wanna walk with the rest of their class, that we, you know, have no, no issue letting them walk, and there's no discussion interest given that they can walk, and, you know, very proud of you adopting that policy.
And, and I think that's a, a fair point. I think the issue that I'm having with the policy is that by guaranteeing IEP students who have not met the graduation qualifications, that in, in some respect, in many respects, we're sending the wrong message and the wrong motivation, you know, to our IEP students who did complete their requirements, you know, I'm concerned that it, you know, undervalues or diminishes their accomplishments. I, I certainly appreciate the extreme efforts that those students had to put forth to complete our rigorous program, and, and I didn't wanna diminish, diminish that, and I think to some extent it could be interpreted that way. I, I think to the teachers and the administrators who worked tirelessly to help these students complete their coursework on time, it sends the wrong message. It, it maybe didn't have to work so hard because, you know, this student was gonna be allowed to walk regardless. And again, I just want to be clear, we are simply talking about students who have not met the graduation requirements. Any IEP student who meets the graduation and moving on requirements automatically has the right to walk. We're only talking about this, and, and again, based on the superintendent's comments, this has only happened once in his twenty-seven years in the Jericho School District, and, and I think by putting in a policy like this, perhaps sending the wrong message, perhaps diluting the motivation for students, for teachers, to, to complete everything, that, that we're actually doing a disservice to all students with IEPs and, and also the students who, who hadn't completed that. So I would go back to the existing policy, which it was, if it's unclear, it was at the superintendent's discretion, not at the board's discretion, that the board had no input under the existing policy, that it was one hundred percent the superintendent's, and I think there needs to be a subjective portion to this, and I think if, if the subjective portion is with the superintendent, I think that's not as optimal as what we originally talked about three months ago, but it's certainly better than making this an automatic guaranteed right.
My recollection, Sam, from our discussion, from our last discussion on the issue is, I think I heard unanimity from the board saying that an IEP student should, and I strongly agree, should walk with his cohort. I, I, I'm positive I heard every board member say, philosophically, I agree with the superintendent, that a student with an IEP can choose to walk with his or her cohort. So, again, that, that was the last discussion, I, so I don't understand why we're, uh...
Okay, then let me, okay, I, I'm going to avoid, you know, discussing esophistry that, that gets involved in this conversation. But once again, let's remember, we're talking about IEP, IEP students who have not met the requirements outlined in the existing policy. Number one. Two, the idea of what was proposed at the meeting two months ago was proposed at that meeting in November. At which time I said, let's table this because I wanted to give it some more thought. I knew, there was not a draft of that proposal put out before the meeting the way I've always done with mine. It was raised at the meeting and we had a 30-minute conversation about it and we moved forward. And it, it hit two months since then, I've thought about it. I've had people approach me with comments about it. I've had people who have IEPs, who don't have IEPs. And one of the conversations that made an impact on me was from a student or family whose student does have an IEP. And they said, I think in some ways this might diminish my student's feeling of achievement when he slash she, having graduated, having completed all of the requirements. You know, someone may look at them and say, oh, they have an IEP, they were guaranteed the right to walk, as opposed to saying that this person earned it. Again, when we're going to talk, you guys can have all your opportunity to talk. I'm just making a statement. I understand that almost regardless what I say, people are going to disagree with it. I understand on this issue, people are going to disagree with it. That's why we have these conversations.
Sam, again, the only question I raise is that I distinctly remember you agreeing with, uh, with the statement that IEP kids should be able to walk with their cohort. I remember you making that statement.
Please just say IEPs, of course, Mrs. Citron, just please make the statement, Mr. Krishnam, because I, I'm really tired of having false things said about this. IEP students...
You didn't say that, Sam?
Again, I'm going to tell you exactly what I said, that IEP students who had not completed. Basically, yes, I voted in favor of what was proposed two months ago. Absolutely, I, I'm fully able to say that. And as others have reevaluated their position, I've reevaluated my position over the last two months. And so I, I agree that IEP students who have not met the, the delineated graduation requirements should have the opportunity to walk at the superintendent's discretion. And if the superintendent's going to sit here and say that anyone who comes across my desk and says, I want to walk, you're going to say yes to, then that's fine, then, then that would be the decision. But at least there is some subjectivity to it. At least it's not that someone just, you know, walks when, for whatever reason, there's a reason why they shouldn't. And again, one of the things that caught my attention over the last two months, because remember, the first time we ever talked about a guaranteed right for an IEP student who has not met the requirements to walk was two months ago. And I said, when I had a family talk to me and say, well, well, this, I look at this as diminishing the accomplishments of my child because it's basically saying they could have walked regardless. And, and I understand there's a whole bunch of other things associated with this. And I understand we're moving on from this. And I think there's one of two ways we can move on from this. We can say, we're not adopting any policy, we're going back to the existing policy, which is my preference. Or there's going to be a vote and we're going to adopt this new version. So I'm not looking to extend this past tonight, but I truly believe that making this a guaranteed right is, is inconsistent with us looking out for every student in the district.
Sam, I completely disagree with you, of course, under your breath, of course.
No, not aloud, of course.
Okay. But I, we're allowed to disagree, but we can disagree on the, on the subject matter.
Of course.
Okay. And I don't think that we're diluting anything. If a student, a student is not getting a diploma, they're not actually getting a, graduating from Jericho, so you're not diluting anything by letting them participate in a ceremony if that's what they need to do in, in accordance with their, uh, IEP or if that's what makes them feel okay and feel, feel respected and feel accomplished and their dignity. So there's no reason that we have to have terms and conditions on when someone can walk. We should always let them walk if that's what, what works for them. And we're not diminishing anything because they're not getting a diploma unless they earn it. And I'd like to move to a vote. What would you call it, was it called call the question? Or is it called the question? All in favor?
Wait, just before you do that, I would really recommend not calling the question because you don't even understand my points.
I didn't know what it was called, but I'm allowed to call the question. It means that we've discussed it enough and we think we need to move on. So I do know what it is. I just didn't know what it was actually called.
Call the question.
Call the question. Call the question.
What are you two scheming over here?
I'm scheming nothing.
Not that Jen's doing anything, but you are.
I, I'm not scheming anything, I'm trying to have a conversation and...
Chris, Mr. Bowers, can you explain what's going on?
We, we just go to, I think we're at the point where we can just go to a vote.
I would agree with that.
That is the smarter parliamentary move.
So let's go.
All in favor? All against? And you're abstaining?
I'm thinking about it. I'll go in favor if you go back.
All in favor? Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you, Sam.
Yep.
Um, adoption of policy 7540. Be it resolved that the Board of Education adopt the policy 7540 student directory information. Do I have a motion? Divya, second?
Second.
Jen, any discussion?
Yes.
I sent around a revised draft of this that I asked to be included in the, in the board package. It was not, um, I think the changes are primarily cosmetic. However, um, they, you know, they need to be made so that we never put in policy. I think, first of all, there's a duplicate sentence between the second and I'm trying to just find it because I don't have everything in front of me.
Are you talking about 7540 or 8330? We're, we're on 7540.
I apologize, not 7540. My mistake. I made my mistakes.
And so do you have a discussion on 7540?
It's a wonderful policy.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. Be it resolved that the Board of Education adopts policy 8330 objection of instructional or other material. Do I have a motion? Jen, second? Chris? Chris, okay. Now, discussion, Sam?
Um, I, I think there's just repetition here. It's, the first sentence goes, um, the second sentence goes nicely, and then I think the third sentence just repeats what we're saying. I'm just, I'm just trying to compare it. I sent it around, it was there, I'm just trying to find the old one. To teachers, child's education, the Board of Education strongly encourages transgovernance to follow the, I have to use my, that's what I'm trying to compare it to, but I didn't do the way because that's what should be included in the package. Set forth a website and start any session with classroom teacher if appropriate. First, I think we just need to put a paragraph before any criticism as a second thought. And then, I'd like the Board of Education to be informed in writing. And that would really just mean forwarding whatever email or writing that the, um... That the, I don't remember my comments in this, but, yeah, open it up. Oh, I'm going to notice, I'm just trying to figure out what I have to say.
Sam, I just remembered from the statement you sent out that you had a comma and if, including the teacher, comma, if it was appropriate, and I, I don't really...
If it was appropriate, okay.
You said comma, if appropriate involving the teacher, but I can't think of an instance where it would not be appropriate to involve the teacher. That's what you said, comma, teacher, comma.
That's fine, if you have it, then great, thank you. I mean, I can think of lots of areas where it's not going to be appropriate, but that's besides the point. I don't really care, just give a paragraph.
Considering that instructional material would not, would not get back to the teachers, and you mentioned every other, um, level of the educational process, the curriculum associate, the superintendent, you, whatnot, but it's going to get back to the teacher, they're the one that's going to teach the, the educational plan. So I think it's always appropriate to involve the teacher.
If this doesn't say include, it says start.
It says comma, if appropriate, if appropriate.
Yeah, if appropriate, to start the discussion with the classroom teacher.
But it's always, it's always...
I, I think in many of our conversations, you said it might not be appropriate. If there's some reason why the parent or the student doesn't want to go to the teacher, this is, we've hashed this one out. I apologize that I wasn't following my notes, I was looking at something else. I, I'm not saying that it's a good thing to do, but there might be a time, this is the conversation we had two months ago, that there might be a time when you aren't comfortable going to the teacher for whatever reason.
Right, and we did have this discussion recorded, but I don't think I've addressed it well with everybody, so it should be removed from that.
Right, so, right, so, and I had made the comment, I think, a couple of months ago, saying that there may be situations where, um, the student or the family will just feel more comfortable. This is what...
Okay, let me go back and go on.
No problem. Like I said, we're all, we're all in.
This is not his word.
No.
One of the worst items, if not mine, it had to be something, we had reached, I would just say having a comma, not a comma for the English. No, if you don't want, if you want to go back and discuss it, I'll add a picture.
No, but I think we underscored the...
Oh, you're adding the word in writing, I see.
No, it's, it was adding the word in writing.
What is, what is, what's, what are you trying to accomplish with in writing?
Oh.
Versus just inform, so at least it's...
I, I think that, that, you know, I don't want to say paper trail, but I think a record. And so if, if the super, I mean, we're requiring the parents or the student to inform the superintendent in writing, um, as opposed to it being a throwaway comment, he should just forward that material to us the same way he forwards boatloads of other materials to us, by email, Mr. Checklet, not by regular mail. Well, I, 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 again, why would I want it in writing? So that I would have it in writing and so I don't have to rely on my memory, I don't have to rely on taking notes at the time. And I think that's the proper way of doing things. I, I apologize, I did not think that would be at all controversial. And so I'm happy to come up with a full-throttled defense of the writing. The same reason why I thought putting a paragraph break between if appropriate and any criticism, just so that it's, you know, reads properly, looks properly. And, and for clarity's sake, for everyone sitting on the right side of the room, I in all hope and in every effort that I've ever had encouraged parents to talk to the teacher first. I have always spoken to the teacher first and, you know, if there's a teacher that I haven't spoken to first, I challenge them to identify themselves.
So, could you run it to Joe? Should we go with... Yeah, Sam's, yeah, no problem. Sam's draft is really not that different from what we're reading. I think he added the word in writing and he made a para, paragraph break.
Just have to be clear on what we're voting on.
Oh. It wasn't ambiguity, it was the first sentence and the second sentence sort of said the same thing. I, I didn't change it, I don't believe in my draft, but it sort of directed open communication, parents, teachers. It's fine though, I'm, I'm fine with it. If we just add the paragraph break and, and in writing, I'm good to go.
I personally have a problem with, with requesting that in writing. I mean, I, I think if, if somebody's going to take the measure of, of objecting to material, I think they should be clear as to what they're objecting to. It should be right. I mean, in, in a perfect world, it's a, it's a sidebar discussion with a classroom teacher and it's, it's quickly addressed and, and explained and it never rises to this occasion. Again, this is, this is for, for somebody who has a formal objection to instructional material or, or, or a lesson in the classroom. Again, I, I can't see many instances where something would ever rise to this occasion if a, if a simple conversation is, is had first with the classroom teacher where there could be an explanation as to, you know, what the intent of the lesson is or maybe there was some sort of misunderstanding. What's that? Do we have a par, the paragraph? Look at the, the board package from last month.
I would like to, I don't know, can I make a motion to adopt the redlined version? That we can read out loud for the public?
Do we have a, a, a copy of it tomorrow?
It's in the email.
Which one?
If you want, I can read it. Exactly. But Jill, you want to read it out loud?
You know, let me just, they, they have a few server work within the last month, so let me just, sorry, delay it.
I just want to see a side-by-side comparison. Oh, Chris just added it. Okay. That's fine. Thank you. All right.
So can I make a motion to adopt the...
So it's basically the policy that's attached with just the word in writing added in a paragraph.
Well, do you, should we read aloud? Do you, yeah. Want to do that? Well, I'm going to read it off of the red line.
All right, I just want to make sure that it's in the...
Well, why don't you pull it up while I read it? Yeah.
Do I just have to pull it up? That would be so cute.
You got it? Okay, uh, it says, direct, open, and respectful communication between students, parents, teachers, and administrators is the quickest and most effective method to resolve concerns about a child's education. The Board of Education strongly encourages parents, guardians, and/or students to follow the communication protocol set forth on the district website and to start any discussion with the classroom teacher if appropriate. Any criticism of instructional materials that are in the schools should be submitted in writing to the superintendent. The Board of Education will be informed in writing. Matters submitted to the superintendent will be referred to the appropriate persons to handle such matters, um, such as a curriculum associate, principal, assistant superintendent for curriculum and instruction, and such matter will be resolved promptly.
Okay, so I just want to point out that there's a sentence taken out.
It's combined. And that, that's what I was trying to figure out before. Absolutely.
So you provide the Board of Education strongly encourage...
Because it repeats itself, the second sentence, the third sentence are complicated, correct? That's why I was just combining them.
Okay. Okay, I'm good with that.
I apologize for that, send me a red line.
Okay, so...
So I made a motion to adopt the redlined version.
Second.
Any further discussion? Anyone out there? All in favor? Prove five of... Michelle or Chris, is someone teaming up with red version?
Chris, Chris, I was gonna...
Okay, thanks.
Can you drop? Does the, does the clause in writing in that, in that, in the new policy?
Yeah, in writing.
It is in that.
But an email constitutes writing. But an email constitutes writing. Not mail.
We should do without posting.
I'm gonna make a suggestion now, that you gotta review every single policy in the district. Where there's no history required, because if you don't have "in writing," now you have to stand it to the one policy that says "in writing."
I agree, that's why I didn't think it was necessary.
Wait, notice to who, the board or...
Whoever, whoever. You now have one policy that requires writing, which would imply that every other notice in all your policies doesn't require writing.
There are the policies that have required writing.
Put some, you know...
Every attorney in the room will agree to that.
Maybe, can I just, I, 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 I make the shot, but I'm gonna do this anyway. 7222, one of the things that, in the excitement about passing it, that I think we forgot to do, that was taken out. In the old draft, it had that the district will notify all students, all eligible students, of this policy. We removed that from the policy. So even though these students have guaranteed the right, a lot of them may not know about it. And so, not for now, but I think we need to add that back into the language so that any, not any IEP student who may not qualify under normal circumstances, who are now guaranteeing the opportunity to, should be notified. And that existed in the old policy and was dropped from the November draft. I'm sure by accident, just as we said, "Okay, cut out that whole paragraph." But I think that notice is vital to making that policy work. Otherwise, no one knows about it, it doesn't really help them.
Couldn't that be disclosed as part of their CSC meeting?
That's, that's...
Yeah, so, I mean, it could just be a part of that meeting. I don't know if necessarily it's to be specified in the policy.
I only know it was, and now we've dropped it out. So to Mr. Checklet's point, if we dropped it there, I don't know, maybe we dropped it everywhere. Again, I defer to people who know about it, it was in there.
Acceptance of donation. Be resolved that the Board accept of the district a donation of $5,000 from the Jericho Educational Foundation and a donation of $10,000 from a donor who wishes to rent a free man anonymous. We respectfully request that said funds be used toward the purchase of a projector and a screen, be a little theater. And be resolved that the budget, I mean, the district increased the appropriate budget for the amount now. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Jen, second? Devia, any discussion other than, "Thank you very much," from, to both parties? All in favor? Thank you, I vote. Approval of schedules, A13063 through U350. Do I have a motion?
I'll test.
Thank you. Jen, second? Devia, any discussion?
I have one question regarding, we paid Newsday $1,067. I'll go through this question to you, check 1022. What do we, what do we spend money on usually to, to the newspapers?
Legally, either for a bid opening. We have a tremendous amount that we spend during the budget and election that requires advertising in the legal notice section of Newsday.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And under 1308 Schedule H about resignations and retirements, dare they tend to replace Mrs. Amula's Science Seer at Seaman with another full-time Science Seer at Seaman?
You're right.
Thank you.
I don't know who this question's for. There's a new fifth grade club, and not affiliated with the school. Is that a club that's going to be all three schools together?
There's a lot that goes into that, personnel, who might want to do that. I'm not supporting that option, any other to...
It's called a fifth grade club.
A fifth club, so the coding?
The coding club?
That was a district, a local coding club?
No, like, on the schedule, like, there's a schedule of clubs, and there was a budget, and it says a new club added, the fifth grade.
But if I'm not mistaken, that was a district-wide club. The person reading it, the first student, Zach Kini, standing up?
Yes.
Jack, all right? Because she did it for the entire school. It was over to all fifth graders. One person at that school, and that's how we did it, but it was all kids.
It's called, it's called a fifth grade club. That's coding?
There's a club called Jericode.
Jericode, right.
I don't think that's for fifth graders.
That's a new, that's stealing code, yes. Fifth grade club, Jericode.
Oh, Jericode, right, that's it.
Jericode.
Right. So, each year, all of it to every student, every fifth grader.
Students from all three schools, it was open to all fifth graders. We wound up doing a lottery, just to, for, you know, just for the...
Right, I just was curious, looking at the club, I was thinking...
Yeah, Jericode, for, for fifth grade students.
Do we transport the kids from...
No, it's virtual.
Oh, virtual.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Jen, second? Chris, all in favor? Thank you all for coming and for participating.